All right, we'll call this meeting of the planning board to order, it's 4:04. Start off with I sent over minutes from last week's meeting and I think Justin and Chris, you had a chance to take a look at it. Anybody have any questions or discussions about it?
No.
Um, I'll hear a motion to accept them.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain as I was not involved.
Yep. All right, um, next, so I have on the line with us is Sarah Adams from CMRPC. I have been able to get in touch with Trish Settles and she put together a contract that looks almost exactly like the one that we've had in the past in order for CMRPC assistance with planning and so if we agree to this contract, Sarah, who's again on the line with us now, will be the person who'll be able to help us out in a temporary capacity. I did, I did have a conversation over email with Peter about our, the town's ability to hire anyone right now and it, it sounds like he would much prefer for us to continue on for a little while with CMRPC than to start pushing forward with the interviews for the town planner at this time, so that's what I'm doing right now, so the contract, I sent over a copy of it to everybody, it's for 12 weeks and we can continue it on if necessary, just by reaching out to them. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Um, I, I have to apologize, I didn't see the the application or paperwork come over.
Yep.
Is there, what's the experience with the person they're recommending for us?
Sarah, you want to speak to that?
Absolutely, um, so just to give you kind of my 10 cent resume walkthrough, I'm relatively new to CMRPC, I started in October, but I have about six years of planning experience, I do have my AICP, so I'm a professional planner. Um, and I, my focus is primarily in energy or resiliency, but I have my master's degree in regional planning and I've worked in both the public and the private sector. So at CMRPC, I'm most involved with green communities, but we're all sort of jack of all trade there, so I also have a good amount of experience with zoning and that sort of more traditional land use planning aspect. Um, I do also work with Millville on the green communities, so I'm familiar with Peter, I'm familiar with some of the local players in town. Um, and additionally, I come from private sector where we did a lot of kind of permitting from the other side of things, so I think I've got a pretty good familiarity with, you know, the public hearing process and the sort of administrative help that you all need.
Excellent, thank you for putting that out there, thank you.
And I could absolutely provide a resume if that would be useful.
Oh no, I just wanted to hear what your background was and I, I did not have, have paperwork in front of me to do that, so I wanted to hear it firsthand, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and so Sarah, if, if we agreed to this, how, how soon could you be starting to work with us?
Uh, I could start immediately upon execution of that contract.
Okay.
I think currently that budget's for about four hours a week plus any planning board meetings, um, so we could get that going as early as this week.
Okay.
I'm not sure Pam, if you saw, if Trish had weighed back in about the LPA hours, but we were able to confirm that Millville has 11 hours remaining this fiscal year for local planning assistance. And then we'd be able to roll in 12 new hours starting in July. So if you did want us to adjust that proposal to include those 23 hours, we could do that and that would bring the fee down pretty significantly.
Okay, yeah, that sounds like it makes sense and I, I believe that's what we did last time. That, when you say the 11 hours for this fiscal year, is that, that needs to be used up soon or is that starting for the, the following fiscal year?
So the way it would work is we would use those 11 remaining hours in the month of June, just to make sure that it's all set and then we'd start with 12 fresh hours in July. So then we could break that up and do six in July and six in August, or however you wanted to do that from an invoicing perspective.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, I can work with Trish on what that looks like, but essentially I think that makes sense because it seems like we're going to be working with your help anyway for the foreseeable future anyway. Um, does anybody have any other questions about this or the, or questions for Sarah while she's here?
Well, I'm all set.
So, and I would hear a motion to move forward with the CMRPC agreement.
Make a motion to move forward with the CMRPC agreement.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Awesome, I'll get this paperwork and I'll work with Trish to get, to figure out the LTA hours and, and get it back.
Okay, sounds great.
Um, perfect, and then in order to, you know, once we get that all set with Trish, I know we have a couple of immediate needs that we could use your help with, is it best that I can just, we can chat on the phone or work with you over email?
Absolutely, um, my cell phone number is in my email signature, that's the best way to reach me while we're all sort of working remotely, so you can, we can set up a call and I can get going pretty much right away.
Awesome, thank you so much, Sarah.
You're welcome. All right, I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the other thing that we have on the agenda today is carriage estates, one. So Bill went and did a, an assessment on last Sunday. To kind of, based on what we talked about the other day, so it was, you know, Richard had come back to us and said that the updates to the road were nearly complete. He was looking to figure out how we could possibly move forward with getting this onto an annual town meeting agenda. We, Brian, I know you and I had spoken and we've had a conversation about how having an engineer go out to assess that might not be possible at this time and so the group agreed that if we could look at it and see that these improvements had been made, that we could consider moving forward. So that's when Bill went out on Sunday to see everything, he took some pictures and emailed them to all of us along with a, a brief description of what he saw when he was there.
I didn't get either one, I know, I had gotten two emails from him, but they were both blank, there was no attachments, nothing in the body.
Okay.
Yeah, mine came through the same way, there was no content available.
All right, I'm going to forward this to you guys.
I did reach out to Bill about that and I did have a discussion with him.
Okay.
He told me what his findings were verbally, but.
Perfect, I'll read what he wrote too unless he hops on. He can weigh in himself, but, so I just forwarded the photographs to you and let me pull up what he wrote. All right, so Bill sent us a letter that, and I'll just read it to you. Hello all, I met with Richard Hurtu on the morning of May 24th, 2020 at 10:00 AM to go over what was completed for his project on Hurtu and Rondon Road. I first observed and photographed the handicap ramps at Rondon Circle and the corner of Rondon, Hurtu and Albert Drive as these are complete. Then, I then observed and photographed the granite curbstones that were sealed within the project. I then observed and photographed the repaving of Hurtu Road and Rondon Road. I next looked at the sidewalk at the corner of Rondon, Hurtu and Albert Drive and saw that these asphalt sidewalks were damaged and repaired with cold patch, a temporary fix in the construction world. I told Mr. Hurtu that this may be an issue and he told me that this was caused by the town highway department plowing from Albert Drive onto this sidewalk. I took photographs of this sidewalk damage and he told me that if this was an if this was an issue, that maybe some of the bond can be held back to make the necessary repairs. I explained that that was above my pay grade. I next observed and photographed the cracked ceiling on Albert Drive. I then observed and photographed the handicap ramp and the corner of Quaker Street and Hurtu Road. I was told by Mr. Malali that Mr. Hurtu had cleaned the drains and Mr. Hurtu offered to present a receipt for that work if necessary. Mr. Malali also informed me that he was aware that the retention ponds were mowed and I explained to Mr. Hurtu that if for some reason he could not get the road approved at the upcoming town meeting, that he would have to maintain the ponds again before the fall meeting. Um, I just want to say that in the end, I'm not an inspector or an engineer in any way, I agreed to check with this completion of items for this project so that we as a planning board could move forward with this applicant to get this road approval. I cannot speak to the quality of the repairs I observed at this project, I therefore ask my planning board colleagues to look over and offer any input regarding this report that you may have. And I know Brian, you seen this firsthand also, so I'm not sure if you want to weigh in on this too?
I have seen the work done and first off, was Richard in on this meeting? Was he notified that we were going to be?
Yeah, he went with, um, he was on our call last week and he went with Bill when he did the, the inspection.
How about tonight, today's meeting?
Uh, it was posted.
Okay. I have viewed the work that he's done, uh, he has tried to get everything completed to satisfaction, uh, as Bill's noted that he's completed a lot of those tasks. Uh, we have verified the drain cleaning and crack filling and, uh, the joints on the granite curbing also. As far as, um, the damaged sidewalk and the type of repair he's done to it, um, that is not satisfactory. And I don't foresee the town taking responsibility to have that corrected in, in any means, uh, by holdback or doing the work or anything. With that being said, I mean, I want nothing but to see these three roads get accepted to finalize the project. Uh, do I firmly believe the road is, is, the road itself is structurally sound? Yes. The road is not going to go anywhere, uh, it's been there for 15 years. But with that being said, I am not in accepting the quality of the repair that was done on the sidewalk. And this is, you know, obviously my opinion as it was not done properly. By all means, um, this road is ready to be inspected or, or be accepted, I should say, not inspected. Are we at the ninth hour again? Yes, we are. Um, the town meeting warrant, town meeting wa, yeah, we're actually, you're right, we're past that hour because town meeting should have already happened and with circumstances, it just hasn't. Um, I've talked with the town administrator, uh, as of today, also actually, and you know, the town's pushing to have a early special town meeting this year and by all means, uh, this road acceptance could go on there. Um, I don't, you know, foresee, and I'm not speaking for the selectmen, but the warrant's closed and I don't foresee them putting this article on the this up and coming annual town meeting, um, at this last hour. I can't speak for them, but, uh, this is my, my opinion. So I guess what I'll say is unfortunately, it's not ready, uh, under my opinion to go on to the warrant.
I agree on the, on the sidewalk alone, you know, especially that one picture. Um, you can see a bunch of cracking, not only where the cold patch was, but even past that, that, that's already having issues and you know, I think that needs to get rectified correctly before we even think about it becoming a town issue or town responsibility.
All right. In my conversations with Peter as well, you know, there, there's a real push for having a short annual town meeting and the, the opportunity to add things to the warrant has closed. You know, he did think that it, that if we were to get something to the board of selectmen meeting today, that there, there was an opportunity for us to, to basically beg them to put this on there, but if we're not to the point where the work is completed, then that doesn't seem like it's worth the effort of, um, of our department, uh, right now, it also seems as though because of the limited abilities of, limited town meeting that they are putting together, that, that, it sounds like they're looking to have another one in September. So if we could get these items fixed by September, we could put this on the warrant for a September meeting?
Correct, and by all means, it should be an easy, easy task for them. Um, and, you know, by us taking on, um, a, a town planner from CMRPC, they'll be able to guide us a, a little better with, uh, having this done properly because uh, and, and I'm only going from my past memory, I mean, for us to even do this, I, I believe there's public hearings that need to be held also anyway. So, and, and a lot of that can't happen and I'm not sure if they're on the planning board side or the board of selectmen side, because the board of selectmen's are ultimately the ones who will put it forth. Because they own the town meeting warrant, so, um, it, obviously that can't happen either.
Okay.
By all means, at the stage this is at, if we can get the sidewalk repair done, um, still not having to, in my opinion, not having to involve an engineer later. You know, I, I think he's, he's done his due diligence enough to, uh, in my opinion, not to have him do that or go through that step again. Um, the only other thing by the next town meeting he will have to do and if he does it right, you know, maintaining him all season long is keep the ponds, you know, trimmed up and tidied up, so when we accept them, they're at a, at the starting point they're supposed to be at.
Okay. Perfect, so I can reach back out to Richard with this information. That the sidewalk repair still, it needs to be done. They'll need to maintain the roads all season long. He won't have to go through an engineer's approval, they'll be able to come before the board one more time. In a timely fashion so that we have, we are able to get any information over to the board of selectmen, any more language that needs to get put over to them in a timely fashion and with enough time to hold the proper public hearings.
And I'm not the, you know, I'm only speaking for myself about the engineer, I, maybe you talked about it your last meeting, but
We did, yeah.
Want to make sure that ev- everyone else, uh, feels the same way, I mean, by all means, if, if someone or the majority of the board wants wants an engineer to come out and do the final inspection, uh, I'm only one, you know, stressing my, my opinion on this. Um, and it's not, yeah, he has to maintain the road, but it's the stormwater retention ponds that he has to make sure he maintains, uh, for the rest of the season.
Um, so when we talked at our last meeting, we talked specifically about waiving the need for an engineer right now because of situation that we're in. Um, but it's something we could talk about as a group right now, if, if we would feel okay with not having to have Mr. Hurtu go through um, the engineer's approval, which is costly to, uh, later in the summer in order to get onto any fall meeting. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I mean, being that I'm new to the, uh, new to the board, you know, you guys, um, were all kind of a part of this, I believe. Um, early, early on, so you have more familiarity with it than I do, so I'm comfortable with whatever. You know, if Brian and everybody is comfortable with it, waiving it, I'm fine with that as well.
I would agree with that too.
Is that Bill?
Yes.
Hey Bill, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I mean, I, I had agreed to go out there, just, uh, get it moved along, I mean, I just, I just wrote in that, the writing to you that I was finally able to get out of my email, uh, that, you know, I, I was just going according to looking at what he was supposed to do, you know, I mean, I don't, if you guys are good with it, I don't know about quality or whatever in these matters, but the corrections, except for the broken sidewalk, were apparent and, you know, uh, I'm, I'm fine with any way we go on it right now.
And Rich, Richard's been very, you know, forthcoming with, uh, letting us know when all the stuff was going to be done. Me in particular, I guess I should say, and back when we had, still had Sarah, our last town planner in place, he was always, you know, letting us know the stage he was, he was at. Um, again, the solar company who did resurface Hurtu and Rondon Road, they were again, uh, notified us every step of the way. We verified, you know, the milling, we verified the, uh, new laying of the new pavement, the tackifier, uh, and, and all the above, again, then when Richard did the drains, uh, for the second time, um, just a few months ago, uh, he, you know, let us know ahead of time, asked, you know, if it was okay and pulled us who he was using and, and everything was done, done to our satisfaction.
Had he ever brought up the, the sidewalk bit with you?
With me, it's never come up.
Right. So he did, he had reached out to me since our last meeting, uh, at, at our last meeting. We had voted on the release of the bond for the solar company, uh, in that area because that was, according to the decision, was contingent upon the project being completed. Um, but I know Richard had reached out to me afterwards to say that he felt as though it was contingent upon the road being accepted, which was not in the language of the of the, um, original decision, so I, I think, I think maybe he was thinking, correct me if I'm wrong Brian, but maybe he was thinking that some of that was the money that he could use as a sidewalk?
No, no, that bond doesn't have anything to do with
With this?
Him.
Okay.
Him, but, uh, I wasn't involved with that vote, uh, the last meeting, but I'm not, you know, I, I almost think that, that we need to reach out to Oxbridge and, I mean, I don't know if it's too late, you said you made a vote to release the bond, has that gone through?
Uh, it's contingent on a letter from our department to
Okay, I just questioned whether or not, um, the access road to the solar array which is in Millville and I don't know either way if it is completed or not.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, Oxbridge Planning Board is the ultimate holder of the solar array project, um, with a special permit and, you know, I think they would know if it's been completed on their end. Um, I know the road paving's been done, but I don't believe, and either way, I'm not sure, but I, I don't believe the access road to the solar piece has been completed to the plan. But I think that might be what is being talked about. How can we release that without the project, without everything being done that was spelled out in it? And I think some of that has to do with, with stormwater.
Okay. So a way to move forward on that piece would be to reach out to Oxbridge?
I guess I, yeah, we reach out to Oxbridge and, um, also reach out to the solar company for documentation on that being completed. This is off the, uh, ma, off the road, so technically private property. Um, it's the, like I said, it's the access piece going into the solar array for the future use.
Okay. I will, I can help myself, I will see if Sarah can help us to figure that piece of it out. All right. Lastly, uh, oh, any, any other questions or discussion about about these pieces, the, about the carriage one? Anything related to what we've been talking about?
Um, I just have a general, general question, I guess.
Yep.
Uh, about, uh, Copeland Roofing there on Central Street?
Uh, yeah.
Like we were at with that, um, application and stuff.
Hold on. Um, I don't, that's, Brian, is that the one, the application that we think is still at? The
No.
No, which one's this one?
Well, that might be because I know he was wanting to commit one, but I don't know, I never seen one or heard anymore about it. Copeland Roofing was, is that, uh, the old garage that's being rehabbed on Central Street, that's prior to the one, the new commercial build that wants to be done. He's cleaned it up very, very nice. Uh, he's had permits.
I ran, I ran into him and he was saying, he was just generally talking, you know, saying that he's been waiting, um, like for planning board review and that's approval and that kind of stuff, um, so you can go on the site plan. But he wasn't sure, he knew like that we didn't have a town planner right now and, so kind of like what his next steps was.
Yeah, so he said he submitted.
Has he submitted an application?
Yeah, he said he submitted a while ago. But he hadn't heard anything from anybody.
Yeah, I don't have anything from Central Street.
Okay.
Um, Brian, there was, there was another person I, I'd seen on social media that was saying that there was an application. Something.
That I believe, I believe was the, the other one, the, the commercial build that wants to uh, move forward on Central Street. The one who came to us, uh, before all this, um, happened with the preliminary plan.
Yeah.
I believe that was them, uh, that, that's the one who reached out via phone, um, just inquiring what the steps were going to be.
Okay.
Which I haven't seen, I haven't, I haven't seen the application either.
Yeah, and I had reached out to Peter a couple of weeks ago, instead of there were any applications that were sitting there waiting for me, you know, could, could I either arrange to come get it or could you pick them up and they just said that you could pick them up anytime, Brian? Um, but I, I haven't heard about any of them being submitted, I'm not sure.
Someone tells me, tells me where they are, I can pick them up.
All right, I will ask, um, I'll reach out Diane and see if she knows where they are, if we can figure out where these applications are sitting.
I guess all the planning mail needs to be taken out and gone through somehow.
Yeah. Um, if I can, if I can work out where all this stuff is living, can you pick it up, Brian, and I can try to grab it from you at some point? Okay.
Yes, yep, just let me know.
All right.
If, if there is something for Copeland, can you, I don't know, is it appropriate, like, can you let me know and then I can say to him, hey, you know, we didn't have it, we have it now and we'll, you know, be reaching out to you very shortly, like.
You know what I'll do is, uh, when I get it from Brian, I'll scan everything in and send everything to you guys to
Okay.
See it. Right, um, the last thing that I had to talk about today is we were going to try to schedule a public hearing for Thayer Street, the, the accessory apartment, um, project and I had, I had reached out to the applicant with a couple of dates to make sure it worked for him. And I had, I had reached out to the applicant with a couple of dates to make sure it worked for him and I still haven't heard back yet. So I'll just continue to work with him to figure out a date that, that works. Um, I'll, I'll circulate that information uh with you guys and work with Sarah from CMRPC to get the uh public, when we can figure out a, a date that works for everybody. And I'm imagining that would be a virtual public hearing still at this point.
Correct.
That's what I have um for, for active applications for us to talk about. That was, and the Alfonso Heights piece of it, which I'm, I'm working right now and, and this is another reason why I'm working with CMRPC, is that we need to get that information off to the engineer for peer review, peer review. And I'm uh struggling to get the information from town hall about how to contact those folks um to have that happen. Does anybody else have anything you want to discuss tonight?
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Great, um, I'll hear a motion to close our meeting.
Make a motion to close the meeting at four thirty-five PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.